Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield School Committee meeting of Wednesday, March 18th. This meeting is intended for just a public budget hearing. But I would like to call the meeting to order and start with our Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I would like to call attention to the fact that, you know, the school committee is meeting in person because this was a public hearing that we needed to have by statute. We are practicing social distancing, as you can see. Two of our members are participating from home. That would be Amy Purcell and Tom Flynn. I would like to read the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences to meet their individual needs and interests. I would like to have a motion, please, to enter into our public hearing.
Go ahead.
Okay, there's a second.
Second.
Okay, it would be a roll call vote. I'll just start with Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Markham.
Yes.
Ms. Fortier.
Yes.
Ms. Bayer.
Yes.
Squida.
Yes.
And I would also be yes. Okay. So we are officially in our public hearing. We have communicated throughout several media outlets the need to have the public participate by either sending in emails to the superintendent prior to the meeting, or they can participate on WCAT's Facebook Live feed, or which would be www.facebook.com/wcatwakefield, or they can call the studio at 781-224-0300 and relay any questions that they may have for the committee or the superintendent to answer regarding the 2021 proposed budget. This budget will be voted on by the school committee at next week's meeting to proceed further to present the two-town meeting. So at this point, we are going to await any feedback from the public. Do we have anything yet?
I don't have anything on email. Anything on Facebook Live?
Nothing, nothing yet.
Okay.
So our discussion prior to the meeting was that we would, you know, give this, you know, seven or eight minutes to see if anybody was going to call in or not. We realized that this is a great deal of distraction with other items with all that's going on, so we may or may not get any participation. While we're waiting, are there any members of the committee that had specific questions on the budget themselves? I know that wasn't our intention for this evening.
I've got one.
Okay.
Um, there is a line item for school supplies. And I just wondered if you could talk about how that money gets allocated to teachers? Um, and is it the kind of thing that, well, I assume because it sits at the school level, kind of the principal kind of manages that, but I just wondered if you could describe kind of whether there's a common process across schools, if there's an allocation per teacher. Um, there's just been, there's been some talk of teachers spending money on their own supplies and just, I wanted to understand kind of what that process looks like because I've heard from friends who work in other districts about kind of what their process is.
Are you looking at a specific page?
I was not. I mean, there's different line items, I feel like, for supplies at each school level.
Got it, yeah.
So I think my interpretation of that was that it was, I can try to find an example of one.
That's okay, I think I can answer if you can't.
Supplies, business, and finance, that may not be the right one. I'm looking at the high school, I probably need to get to one of the schools. I'm talking about general supplies to cover costs of just day-to-day stuff that is needed in the classroom.
Paper pencils, crayons?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, the supplies, supplies budget is different at different levels.
Okay.
Right? High schoolers need different supplies
Different stuff, yeah.
to participate in their learning than middle schoolers and certainly elementary school students. Um, we do have teachers that spend money out of their pocket every year. And kind of it's not a first choice, I think, on the part of any administrator to have that happen. I think, you know, we try to resource teachers in ways that we can, but those supply budget, supply budgets, supply budgets are for things that teachers can say that they need. So I think that those budgets are built with teachers in mind, but I don't know if it's divided equally among teachers, among classrooms.
Sure.
I think it's supplies for the school. And things are ordered and they're kept in a supply room and as teachers need supplies, they can make an order and I think that they're often filled by the school secretary.
Okay.
So.
So it's kind of a, it's a pool of money where they are, there's probably general supplies that are purchased for the beginning of the year. Teachers can make special requests for things.
Yes.
But there, so is there also the opportunity for teachers to ask for reimbursement? Or for when they do spend their own money?
There are opportunities for teachers to ask for us to order what they might need.
Yep.
Which I think is the most, probably the best way to do it.
Yeah.
Um, I think reimbursements are difficult after the fact.
Sure.
Right? And so one of the things that, you know, if you remember a few years ago, we had teachers present at school committee with information around lessons that were created for play-based learning. And they had shared their need for some resources for those lessons. And the answer was, we, it's, we, that's part of curriculum. That should, is something that should be supported. So if there are things like that, you know, that teachers are purchasing at pre-K, K, or even one, they should have a conversation with their administrator and we should figure out a way to support and resource those, the creation of those lessons.
Would books also fall into that same category for curriculum or no? Books for classrooms like, you know, early readers?
There's a separate line.
Go ahead, Chris, I'm sorry.
There's a separate line for books.
There is a separate line for books. And we pay for classroom curriculum materials.
Right.
Um, through, it can be paid for through supplies at the school level. It can be paid for through book lines at the school level. And if it's, if we're supporting a new initiative or a new build, they're often supported through the district curriculum lines. Got it. So there's a few different ways that those can be resourced as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
On the thought of reimbursement though, do we, are there any snags about state bid lists and that kind of thing? Is there a dollar minimum that you have to have on that or for the matter?
Um, that's a Christine Bufagni question, I think, in regard to the dollar minimum. My comment about reimbursing can be difficult. We would rather purchase it on the front side because if, you know, let's say, you know, teacher is out and they say, I had to pick something up, you know, we have 330 teachers, right?
Right.
And to have people not kind of asking for what they need or seeking to get approval or reimbursed on the backside, that can be rather difficult. Right? What is it? Is it part of the curriculum? How much does it cost? What are the limitations? So I think what is probably best practice is for teachers just to have a conversation with the administrators, their principals. And I think, one of the things that I think we've worked hard at, and I know Cara Morrow has worked hard on this in regard to curriculum materials as well as the coordinators, I think we're, we try to figure out ways to resource what teachers feel like they need. You know, through grants, through whatever way we think we can to try to get teachers what they need, right?
I am looking at the Dolbear budget and it has instructional textbooks, instructional furniture, instructional supplies. So textbooks independent of what's needed for curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
Is that what that item covers or does that?
It can, sure.
Does it also cover curriculum textbooks? Or does that come from a central line item?
So when, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I think if we're, if we're looking to buy in bulk, like say, a certain resource for the entire elementary level or the entire, then that's when I think we're working more with our district curriculum instruction line.
Yep.
Wouldn't you say that's accurate? And we're, we're working with the coordinators to determine what, you know, what level is needed and putting those orders together through central office.
But that could come out of really district lines.
Yep, yep. So the line items at the school level give the school some flexibility around what they can purchase?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
You're certainly welcome.
I was just gonna make a comment, and I think this is well-known, that PTOs I know are usually very generous in supporting the teaching staff. I know that in the past at Greenwood, they were able to distribute gift cards to the teachers and it may be for $25 or $50 just to help out with any costs that they incurred. That they wanted to supplement their classroom with something, you know, specific to their kids or what they enjoy. So that's also a nice thing to fall back on. I know it's not that they want to do that, but I think it's, they understand the need and, you know, the purpose, so.
I had, I was just gonna follow up, like as a, as someone who works in a public school, I'd like to hang up, you know, some art or posters on my wall, right? That generally comes out of my own pocket because that's not necessarily in line with what I do as my work, but I feel like it would make my, my space more welcoming.
So we have a question?
We have a question.
From Mrs. McQuaid.
Um, do you, do you want me to get addresses or?
If you can at some point, but that's a good question anyway, but yeah.
Okay, all right, so I guess maybe we could just make that announcement in the future if people could
Yeah.
give their address as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a question from Amy Lehman. She wants to confirm that Walton will be retaining the .5 adjustment counselor in FY '21.
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna finish the question, I did look, okay. Question answered, yeah.
That's from last year's.
And we didn't take away any positions, as far as I remember.
Right.
So.
Thank you, Amy.
I thought I heard you, your computer go off twice.
Uh, no, that was Brandy Brianna saying that we didn't have any questions and then we got one.
Making sure it worked.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I need to know from the committee, how long do we wait for more questions?
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Um, so I just, this is more just curiosity. Um, I know that, Tom, we had kind of, you had pointed out the requests for each school and we kind of talked a little bit about that and sort of how they're brought forward and then what we do with the information after some of the things have landed in the budget, a lot haven't. So one of the things that I noticed, just kind of going through them, was that three of our schools, Dolbear, Greenwood, and Walton, all requested either a .5 or a 1.0 school and lunch monitor, or lunch and recess monitor and sort of what, other than obvious concern that we've talked about, was there sort of an increased concern with lunch and recess monitoring? Is the concern more towards recess, that we're seeing an increased need there? And what, what is the plan sort of going forward now that we see sort of a trend where three schools are asking for the support?
Yeah, I think, you know, the choice for principals, and I think the reason that they're asking for lunch monitors and recess monitors is because I believe that they would like to have personnel other than staff proctoring recess and lunch. The difficult part is, A, it hasn't been in the past part of the budget, right? And B, you know, at a school like Dolbear, Woodville, and even the smaller schools, um, you know, staff are, they, everyone has a duty, right? And so, for example, teachers proctor recess for their children, right?
Right.
And so for that to, for that to happen, for that break to happen, you know, it's done. Sometimes the duty is shared, you know, sometimes if a teacher needs to go to a meeting and a parent can cover recess, we'll do that, so we'll mix and match whenever we can. Um, but I think it's, I think the principals know that in regard to budget priorities, um, they know that those positions are not likely.
Right.
Items that are gonna be kept. Excuse me for just one second, Colleen.
Mm-hmm.
Ian, do we, do we have any issue with, I got a, I got a note, I got an email saying that people at home can't hear our, they can't hear, they're not getting sound on our, on our, from here.
On what?
Um, I got a note that said, you know, "I can't hear you guys. The sound doesn't appear to be working from the studio as we broadcast."
Right, but is that on the cable system or is that online?
I think online is working.
Yeah, because I hear it online.
I think it's the.
We have somebody monitoring the cable system and they hear it.
Okay, great.
So I'm not sure what the, what the problem would be there.
Okay, so if we can hear it online and hear it on cable, then I think we must be good.
I guess, I mean, I would say for them to check their system somewhere and might be some error there.
Thank you so much. Some, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got it.
No, that's important.
But, but I don't, so did I answer your question?
No, you didn't, yeah. Which, I, that, we've had the discussion before. It's sort of a need that comes up a lot, but unfortunately, it is, it is not a high priority item, but it's, I think it's a constant conversation and how we rectify the problem, less and less parent volunteers are able to come in during that time and to give the teachers the relief that they need, but also an increased need for, you know, proctoring and just for safety reasons, so.
So we also got a really nice recommendation from a parent, um, which we install cameras as part of our safety, one of our safety grants. And so Tom Walsh was instrumental in securing that grant and so we had, we now have cameras at all of our schools. Um, but we've also been able to point some cameras toward the playground just to have kind of an extra set of eyes out there just for safety reasons. Um, and that recommendation came from one of our parents at one of our elementary schools. It's a really nice idea.
Sure, yeah.
And I think that that's gonna be helpful for us. And Cara has another question.
Yep, sort of a couple more. Amy said, "Great," to your response to the .5 adjustment counselor saying the Walton budget. And we have another question from Andy Bray, 3 Highland Ave. He writes, "I appreciate that the budget put forward supports of what the district thinks it needs to achieve the mission and goals of Wakefield Public Schools and support teaching and learning. Too often, the focus of the budget discussion is on some imagined cap, ignoring current economic trends, markets, and town revenues. Two questions. We have added a language-based classroom at the fifth grade level this past year. Does the budget support that same language-based setting for the cohort into the sixth grade? We have made some strides in improving the district's environmental footprint this year. Could you please comment on any specific plans to continue to invest in this operational area next year?"
Sure.
Want to start with the language-based?
Let's start with the language-based. So in the FY '21 budget that has been proposed, we're adding a language-based position at the element, or .5 at the elementary level at Greenwood. We're also adding a 1.0 FTE at Galvin for special education. Um, and we understand that there's, there's going to be some moving personnel around to accommodate the cohorts that are coming from grade four to grade five and grade five to grade six. So the short answer, the shorter answer in regard to Andy Bray's question is, will we have staffing to meet the needs of the students that are moving from four to five and five to six? The answer is yes. The answer is yes.
Great. Okay, that's it, that's it for now.
How goes the second question?
Oh, I apologize, I'm sorry. So I'll repeat the second part of that question. "We have made some strides in approving, in improving the district's environmental footprint this year. Could you please comment on any specific plans to continue to invest in this operational area next year?"
So one of the things that we're working on in regard to the environmental piece is really trying to manage the costs to make changes. For example, Styrofoam trays. You know, one of the proposals that has been put forward is to, to do away with Styrofoam trays and to get paper trays. Um, you know, one of the things that we've heard is that, you know, in single-stream recycling, if trays have ketchup on them or if they have oil on them or something, sometimes it makes it difficult or next to impossible to recycle if they're stained with food or if they, and so, so we're working on, in next year's budget, we're working on trying to figure out how to do that with trays, for example. Um, we are also working on our trash haulers, and Bob Shiroli is working on this in facilities, to work on our contracts around how our trash people are picking up our recycling. Um, and also, we're paying very close attention to how we are kind of recapturing food and making sure it doesn't go to waste. So those things will continue as well in FY '21. And I think moving forward, they have to be part of a conversation in sustainability every year, so.
Now, the items that Susie's been reporting on are outside our budget though, right? That other group?
Yes, some of those are WEF grants, right? That the composting that's happening at the elementary schools, I believe, was funded, and I think food rescue was funded by WEF grants. Um, I think that the move from the trays, the Styrofoam trays, to an alternative, is it Danielle, the food services? Yep.
Yeah, Danielle Collins, our director of food service.
Right, Danielle is, is working to try and make that net neutral, kind of, so that it does not increase her budget because it's a, my understanding is that food services is a independently-run budget and she doesn't want to raise prices, so she's trying to figure out what she can do. Um, so I think the one question that Doug just talked about was the trash and recycling costs related to getting more consistent recycling happening at every school and can we, you know, can we afford that in the budget, on the existing budget as costs around hauling trash in general is going up.
But that's really out of the revolving account more than our local budget, am I correct?
Correct.
Even the facilities piece, the trash hauling?
Um, I believe that that's out of revolving.
Okay.
So, but I can check, Susie, and let you know. I don't.
We have rubbish removal.
Yes.
I don't know if that's the same. Rubbish removal is on the line for each individual school.
Right.
I don't know if that's the same thing that you're discussing.
I think, but I think that there's a separate line for recycling.
Recycling, yeah.
But we, I can check and get back to you. Yep. And so I also should report that, you know, we have a number of student advocates. We have a fifth-grade advocate, Miriam, at Galvin, um, who made an appointment to come in with, into central office and have a conversation and sent a very articulate email back in January about, you know, how difficult it is on the environment for Styrofoam, for example, to biodegrade. And so I think we're gonna hear more from student advocacy groups around enacting that change as well.
Yeah, there's a number of civics projects on that.
There are, there are.
Focused on that as well at the Galvin.
There are, and I think we're gonna hear more about it at the town meeting as well.
I just love to hear that she made an appointment to come and see you.
She did. Her email was so well-written, I thought it was an adult. And then I got a note from her mom saying, "We'll both be there." And I thought, huh, okay. That's terrific. Very, very well done. Yeah, so.
Can I ask a question on the trays?
Sure.
Um, do any of our schools use, like, old, no. She and Susie knows my question.
We don't have any dishwashers anymore.
Huh?
We don't own the dishwashers anymore.
Oh, okay.
The dishwasher, and Danielle's perspective on the dishwashers is that, so you need special dishwashers. We have some dishwashers, but they're for specific kinds of, like, big cooking trays.
For loading, for loading, yeah.
Not trays that would carry individual.
Like plastic trays?
Yeah, plastic trays. Yeah, it's more for the metal cooking trays.
Yeah.
And that there's, there are cons to using the amount of water that you use, the chemicals that you use to get them clean, the staff it would take to run that. It just, it ends up not, she clearly had done some research.
She's looked into that, yeah.
Right, so it's a matter of can we get recyclable ones or compostable trays?
Plant-based or, yeah. Good.
Mr. Tim?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to follow up on what Susie, Susie brought up earlier tonight and, and ask, and ask Doug a question, maybe a little bit of research. Fully appreciating that communication is gonna be complicated in the next, whatever.
Few weeks.
Weeks, months, whatever it may be. But to Susie's point about, about school supplies, I'm intrigued as to, I'd like to see where, how far we have come and have we continued to be supportive or have we created a gap? What I mean by that, and looking around the table, Chris, you'll remember, that this was probably.
You're saying I'm old.
I'm not, I, I know. But you, you.
Dedicated.
So this, so we have this school committee and I'm going to say it was, I want to say it was Gary Murphy. We made a big deal about school supplies and I know that he sort of took that on, right? And one of the adjustments in, I'm gonna speculate, was the FY '13 budget?
Thereabouts, yeah.
Um, was that we had added a significant amount of funds at that time through some work that Gary Murphy and Sandy Holleran had done when they were tag teaming and then supporting and we were in transition. Michael was just coming and Sandy was, right, Sandy was sort of mentoring Mike, if my memory serves. But my, my point is that we had put a significant amount of funds to school supplies because one of the things that we had heard a lot about was that not so much concerns or complaints by teachers because I think teachers are so accustomed to having to put their own funds, which doesn't make it right. In fact, it was, it's really extraordinary, the amount of, you know, the tremendous goodwill and professionalism and talent that we have among our teaching core, that they just do it as a matter of course. But back, let's say, 10 years ago now or thereabouts, uh, there was lots of concerns, some from teachers, but really more so from PTOs and from parents, if I'm remembering this story. I don't want to make it particularly long, but I just want to provide context. Um, because at the beginning of each year, and at the time I was, we were elementary parents, and we would be handed a list. You'd be getting, even in the packets that went home, the pieces of paper packet that went home to do all the sign-ups, right? And the list was, "Please donate the following school supplies." And they were everything from, you know, dry erase markers to Kleenex boxes, to paper towels, to books and so forth. A laundry list of items that came out as a sort of a, sort of a wish list from teachers.
That went away with Kim. But what, when Gary was here, was really more core things. We used to send a list home that the students need to purchase this to be able to participate in the classroom.
Exactly, there you go, exactly.
They're graphing calculators and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
So, so, so that, so the.
We were trying to move away from it.
The structure of my question, providing this little bit of a backdrop or context, is that are we continuing to ensure that we're providing everything that the district should in our responsibility for our teaching and learning, for both the student and the teacher? Uh, because we have an obligation, the district has an obligation to make sure that every classroom has what it needs, supply-wise, for teaching and learning. Now, there are variations of that. Even Ian mentioned something that a teacher may prefer, a certain poster or a certain color scheme. We provide the appropriate creative liberty to decorate one's room the way they prefer and their sense of style and so forth. But are we seeing in the course of the last five, eight years, are we seeing now a gap? Are we now not providing enough resources? And teachers are back needing to dig into their own pockets much deeper? Are we now not providing enough resources, and teachers are back needing to dig into their own pockets much deeper? You know, are we, and I'm not an elementary parent, and nor am I a middle school parent any longer, so I don't even know if this year, back-to-school nights, where sometimes there's a list, you walk into a teacher's room, and there's sort of a list hanging on the wall, or hanging on the door. So, I'm unaware if that's even occurred this year. So, Suzie's question got me thinking about all, and I think that's where you were going. I don't want to pour words in your mouth, but that's my memory of this.
Yeah, I was just interested in how the money is allocated, in all honesty. I think your follow-up question is a great question, right, is are we funding it enough? Because certainly, I have kids at the middle school, the teachers aren't asking the kids to bring in extra things other than pencils, because pencils seem to be disappearing. But I do know at the elementary level that there are asks happening of the PTO to bring, to supply materials. And so, and not this year at the middle school level, but last year, I'm pretty sure I remember being, having those boards up that you could kind of pull down a sticky and say, "I'm going to send in a couple things of wipes." So, I think it's, I think it's still happening, but probably not to the degree that it was however many years ago when you guys were trying to get your arms around it. But I think taking another look at it to understand, are we supporting this in the way that we need to be, isn't a bad idea.
And that's kind of my question, Doug, that there, and certainly there are three, there are at least three types of supplies. I mean, in the chart of accounts, if Christine were here, she'd give us a lecture on supplies. And I kept my butt, my lip shut throughout all of that, and reimbursement too, I didn't chime in at all. But there are different types of supplies, right? The pencil, there's personal supplies, which should always be the responsibility of the student, provide a notebook and pencils and those sorts of things that are more disposable, especially a kid could be more aggressive in his use, or whatever. But then there are classroom supplies, and then there are personal, you know, teaching curriculum supplies, or teaching supplies that may be disposable or not disposable. I just want to make sure that we haven't created, are we paying enough attention to that? It's a small thing, but it's certainly one of those things that, that, you know, the more that we ask of parents, it's almost like nickel and diming, are we asking parents to contribute paper towels and, and, you know, those type of things? Or are those days in the past?
If I could just jump into, just from conversations I've had here and there too, I just, I wonder also if administratively we need to work with teachers just to make sure that all of the lists are as current as they want them to be, because their needs might change year to year, and sometimes lists, through the craziness of starting up a school year, maybe haven't been as updated as we wanted them to. So, I'm just thinking that we could probably do, just that, you know, I'm in my second year now. I don't think we've really facilitated doing a real overhaul of the class list, or the list by grade level of supplies, to make sure, you know, do these really reflect everything that we need today in our classrooms? And, you know, to check in with teachers to make sure that they absolutely have everything that they need. So, I feel like that's something that we could follow up on.
Yeah, that'd be great. There's always going to be an element where as a teacher wants to decorate his or her room in a certain way, and that's almost like a rite of passage.
Right.
Even though the teacher shouldn't necessarily have to put out his or her own money.
Right.
I can say what is better, what has improved, is this notion of things like tissues, paper towels, you know, wish lists, you know. You know, that, that really, in the past, that has put a demand on parents, and also a demand on teachers, to try to facilitate that. We have tried to take that burden away. It's, there's some irony in that we're having this conversation with all that's going on now with COVID-19, and, you know, how we know that when teachers get back at it, they are going to be, and we know before we had to have our closure, we know that teachers were really vigilant, and just making sure that all surfaces were cleaned and wiped. And, and so, we know that when teachers come back, we're going to need to invest differently, differently in that area moving forward. And that's not only in the way that we clean daily, but it's also in the way that we disinfect, and it's also in the way that we're going to need to supply materials for teachers. So, so that's what, those are a few things that we're anticipating moving forward. But I think Kara's point about, you know, class lists are things that are worth a greater conversation. And I think we can report back in our next meeting.
Good.
I have a couple of questions, if that works, okay. All right, I have a three-part question from Stefan Chase, 31 Emerson Street. Have all collective bargaining agreements been settled at this time? Does the current budget incorporate what has been mutually agreed upon between the school committee and the teachers' union? Sorry, I looked right to you to answer that.
So, the answer, the answer to Mr. Chase's question is, is we have a tentative agreement with Unit A. So, that, that agreement is tentative in that only the subcommittee and the negotiating team of the teachers have approved it. It needs to go in full to the teacher body, and it needs to come back in public session to the school committee. At that point, when both of those things are done, we will have an actual agreement in place. Both the teacher body, as well as the school committee, have a right to reject either parts or whole of what the tentative agreement is. All other collective bargaining groups, other than the teachers, because Mr. Chase's question, I believe, said, are all contracts settled?
All collective bargaining agreements.
So, all other employee groups are settled, and were settled prior to the close of last school year.
Okay, and then the follow-up was, does the current budget incorporate what has been mutually agreed upon between the school committee and teachers' union?
The FY21 budget proposed by the superintendent will support the FY21 agreement. T tentative agreement.
Yep. Okay, Mr. Chase also has another question. Considering limited town resources, would Wakefield Public Schools consider seeking a proposition two and a half override? Do you believe there's a valid case to be made for Wakefield as a community to spend more on education? Do you believe a proposition two and a half override would be successful?
So, do you want me to start?
Go ahead.
You know, I think one of the things that we've really worked hard to do is to collaborate and build a sustainable budget that is within the footprint of the growth of the town. And so, at this point, you know, I think I shared in my budget proposal last week, you know, you know, there's never enough resources. But how do we prioritize year over year and say, okay, we might not get all that we, all that we would like, right? In a given budget cycle, but in, but in the FY21 proposed budget that we're moving forward, we feel like that it, it equitably kind of prioritizes what teachers need to open school next year and to do a great job. And so, and so I don't feel at this time like we are a district that needs a proposition two and a half override, when I don't even think we're close.
Okay.
Yeah, and I say, yeah, maybe, maybe in the future, but not now.
May I also add to that?
If, I may. So, what I'd like to do in answering Mr. Chase's question regarding the prop two and a half override, is sort of work backwards, right, a little, you know, reverse engineering, if you will. I do not believe that, in the political context, or the cultural context of our community, that a proposition two and a half override would succeed for operations. And within that context, within the political reality of that, I think then fits very nicely what the superintendent said, that we need to appreciate the political, the political and fiscal dynamic that our community is, and work within those, within those resources and within those means. That being said, I'm certainly a full supporter of being aware of what our educators believe that they need to advance teaching and learning, and we should continually advocate for advancements. Certainly within the proposition two and a half context. And by being more aware of what those needs are, we can better plan and better strategize over the course of one year to the next, or even five or 10 years down the line. But I don't think that we have, we do not have, this town does not have a history of successful operational overrides. The times that we have been successful in going to the ballot for resource funds are things like our facilities improvements, or building the Galvin, or improvements to.
I guess that was where I was going to go, is that, you know, our focus right now, it would be less on an operational override, and we need to fund our high school renovation, or new construction, whichever it ends up being. I wouldn't try to ask for both at once.
Okay, Mr. Chase has another question. Can you talk about the year-over-year decrease in out-of-district tuition compared to an increase in out-of-district transportation and stable fuel?
I didn't hear the second part of the question, Kara.
Can you talk about the year-over-year decrease in out-of-district tuition compared to an increase in out-of-district transportation and stable fuel?
Sure. The decrease in out-of-district tuitions really stems from what we've been able to create in district. We've added positions, in last year's budget and in this year's budget, we're seeking to prioritize direct service to students in the classroom, and we're seeking to prioritize special education support and programs, you know, and in classrooms. And so, us being able to do that allows us to keep students in district. And when we do that, it's a cost savings, you know, we have to, I've explained this in this way. We have to, it costs money to hire personnel, but in the long run, we're saving more money because the tuition outpaces the cost of the personnel that we have been able to hire. So, so that's what represents both the, some of the cost increase, and also the cost savings.
I think the transportation part might be answered in that the most expensive transportation would be for the most needy students that we are unable to keep in-house. And so, they're still going out and being transported, and some of them are in ambulances, as I recall, right, at times?
And we also have just agreed on a new transportation contract that is increased by 5% in the FY21 budget.
So, the transportation is not necessarily, it's the, the neediest cases require the most expensive transportation, and that's why that line doesn't change as much.
All right, and last one from Mr. Chase. Regarding technology, does a school no longer require a 1.0 FTE of a Level 1 technician? Has this budget submission been coordinated with the IT department?
The FY21 budget will sustain the position that was added last year, the technician that we added last year. So, that position would continue moving forward.
And then we have a question from Dennis Clancy, 9 Melvin Street. He's asking if the Wakefield Public Schools includes sex education in our curriculum. If so, what grades, and most importantly, what curriculum do you use? I feel like you're going to say that's a job for the assistant.
That's a question for you.
I do know that this is built into our health curriculum. Exactly which grades, I want to say off the top of my head, you know, throughout sixth, seventh, and eighth in components, and it's staggered throughout. I believe it might be tied into the Michigan model, but it would be something I would need to follow up more specifically about, unless you know more than me.
No, you have it.
Okay. All right, I don't have anything else right now. If you want to talk about other things.
Or do you want to?
Well, give it a minute, and then if not, then we'll close the hearing, but go ahead.
Doug, can you talk about how athletic coaches and assistant coaches are funded? I ask only because I know that on occasion, we are asked to approve gifts that often note assistant coaches, and so I've been very confused about kind of what is funded and what is not.
Sure. So, we have a number of positions that are funded through the local budget.
Okay.
Both in our curricular and our athletic parts of the contract. So, if you look at our curricular, extracurricular stipends, you, if, as you go down the list, you'll see some things that have a little asterisk, and you'll see that some of those positions are funded through booster organizations. If you look at the athletic schedules, the athletic stipends, you will see what positions, so if they don't have an asterisk, they're funded through the local budget. And if there's an asterisk, they're funded through booster organizations, okay? And the reason for that is because we want to build a budget year over year that we can afford. We also want to support booster organizations and parent groups that want to support sports and provide the best range of coaching and coaches for their sports. For example, you'll see, you know, in football, there are some specialty coaching, right, that happens there. So, the boosters will make a donation that will come to us, and then we will disperse it to a coach. And so, that, there are additional positions that aren't part of the local budget, that, and that would be the reason why, right?
Does the local budget support a head coach and assistant coach for every sport? Or is it, does it literally just depend on the sport?
It depends on the sport. It depends on the sport. And so, so the majority of the models that are built athletically will allow for, you know, more than one coach, right? And so, and if, when participation increases, we've also added coaches through the local budget, right? But when, you know, the numbers are about the same, and I say about the same, you know, because sometimes it goes up and down by a few people. But for example, track has been one of our, especially spring track, has been one of our most successful programs that we run, and, you know, they have, the numbers are in the hundreds, right? And so, when I started here a couple of years ago, we had, you know, two coaches managing hundreds. And so, we've added to that, and, you know, and I think, and the other reason why we put those positions in the budget is because if a unit member has one of those positions, it can also contribute to their retirement. So, some towns will say, you know, "We're not going to put that in the contract. We'll keep it separate from, or we'll keep it out of," right? But then, the unit member does not benefit by having that reflected in their salary that goes toward retirement. So, we, the compromise that I understand, because this has been a practice that has been in Wakefield before I arrived, the compromise has been, we will put the positions that you feel like you need that are going to be funded through alternative sources, but we're going to put an asterisk saying that they will not be funded through the local budget. But that way, they can still get credit for retirement, but yet, it doesn't negatively impact the local budget. I don't know if I, did I explain?
Yeah, yeah. It makes more, it makes much more sense to me. I need to go look at that schedule and just try and understand that a little bit more.
So, a question that we often get, Suzie, is, why don't we just fund all of the, fund all of the positions? You know, we have $550,000 in stipends that are outside of the regular pay schedule, right? And so, you know, I don't think that we're in a position to absorb another $100,000. I don't know, I don't have the exact number, but it could be upward of, you know, $100,000, you know? Because I do know that the curricular stipends that were proposed just recently, and also the asterisked positions that were proposed, you know, were kind of hovering around a $40,000 ad. And that didn't include athletics. So, that's, that's why we've prioritized as we have, and made the decisions that we have around those schedules.
But the reason we have them come in as a gift is to keep the withholdings straight.
So.
If I may, that's a very, very detailed and complicated backdrop to what Chris was alluding to. what, to what Chris was, was, was alluding to. That was a huge sort of, um, you know, many-month conversation around this table with, uh, with our, with the boosters. As generous as the booster organizations were, we needed to get a handle on, um, on even the appointment of assistant coaches, the evaluation, the, the, uh, uh, the ability to, uh, to renew, um, if they, if, see, we get the, the school district gets the, the check as a donation, therefore that individual is an employee of the school district, not an employee of the booster club. So it, there's a, that's the, that's the practical reason for the, the transactional funds coming in as a donation, that what the assistant coach or whatever, uh, capacity the individual may, may perform.
At least a two-year discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was quite, it was quite lengthy, but at the end of the day, it was, it was, it was worked out in, in very good terms coming down in that way, that we can't afford to fund them all. And as Doug was saying, we probably don't even need them all from one year to the next based on enrollment and student participation and so forth.
So that was just a follow-up from Mr. Clancy. He said he will follow up, um, when we do our research and math schools have to choose a curriculum from a list and he would like to know which one has been chosen. So I can certainly follow up.
On the sex ed?
And reach out, yep, and just, um, I'll follow up with Brendan Kent, our Director of Health and Wellness. I can collaborate with him just to get more specifics around, um, that what's included within the Michigan model and any supplementary resources that our teachers might be using and for what, which grade levels.
Did you have other questions?
Nope, not, not at this point.
Well, I think that, uh, we've exhausted all questions and maybe we should entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, we've been at it for an hour. I think that's, communities had a chance. Make a motion to, uh, to close the public hearing of, uh, March eighteenth, two thousand, twenty twenty?
Okay, motion's been made in second, there's a roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Purcell still there? Okay, Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Fordy? Is there?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, we have one more question.
One more question came in?
Yeah.
No.
Is that okay?
Sure. We haven't, we haven't closed it, so go ahead.
I think it's Mr. Chase. He's been, uh.
Is he here?
No, I'm.
Did you have one more, Ian?
Yeah, hang on.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I've got one on, I've got one on Facebook, so, um, from Gerard Lehman, ten Fox Road. Does this budget continue to phase out activity user fees? Halt that initiative or reverse?
No, it does not. That, that, uh, has, that effort has been suspended, uh, for the last two, two budgets.
Okay, so we have another question?
The, the fees remain the same as in FY twenty.
Okay, we have another question from Mr. Chase thirty-one Emerson Street. Can you talk about the fourteen percent increase in costs associated with the high school guidance professional salaries? Is there a metric Wakefield uses to determine effectiveness of Wakefield guidance compared to other like communities?
So the increase, so we've added, uh, we added a position last year. So we added an adjustment counselor to our guidance team. And so, um, I don't have the exact percentage, but I would attribute that exactly to the, to the percentage increase. Um, and so, and that is a position that I believe that was long overdue. Um, we're also doing some work with our, um, Student Services Subcommittee to assess, um, ongoing needs and counseling, um, and we believe that that's going to be a priority, um, moving forward at the high school level and the area of adjustment counseling as we move in and start to think about the FY twenty-two budget.
Ian, are we all set or do you have more?
Nothing new is coming.
Okay. Okay, so.
I'm good here, yeah.
All right, so we had a motion and a roll call vote to, uh, end the, uh, public hearing. So the public hearing is now closed. Uh, the next meeting of the school committee will be next Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of, uh, and that is likely, from the information I have today, that meeting is likely to be Doug and I here and everybody else will be virtual, as, as the procedure the town is going to be following. If that changes, we will let you know. Otherwise we'll have, uh, call-in information, uh, available for you as it, as it becomes available.
Is that the, the process that came out today, the order that came out today?
Yes.
That's what, though, okay.
Um, so that, that, that's going to be our, our standard procedure for, at least for our next meeting. Okay, uh, and with that, a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.